Good evening. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us. Roll call, please.
Colpak, aye. Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Library. Job service North Dakota staff will visit the Carlson Library February 7th and the Maine Library February 21st. These sessions are free of charge and registration is not required. Services available at these sessions will include job-seeking assistance, veteran services, information on training programs, resume building assistance, limited unemployment insurance assistance, and migrant and seasonal farm worker services. The Fargo Library's Dance Workshop and Storytime for Kids in partnership with FM Ballet is February 8th at 6:30 PM at the Maine Library. Other, Dakota Medical Foundation's Giving Hearts Day is taking place February 9th, and there are many wonderful organizations and charities in our community that would love your support. If you want to donate to a specific city of Fargo causes, we are seeking funds for the Gladys Ray Shelter and the Fargo Police Department Badges of Unity Fund. To learn more about these programs and where to donate, visit fargond.gov/givinghearts. I know firsthand, we've had an extremely generous community in the Fargo metro, so on this Giving Hearts Day, I challenge each and every one of you to find one way to give, whether it's financial or of your time. Let's show our region how much we care for one another by donating on Giving Hearts Day. The Fargo Fire Department, the Fargo Police Department, and 14 other first responder organizations within Cass and Clay County were honored at the Hometown Heroes Event at the Fargo Forest Game on January 21st. Fargo Police Lieutenant Bill Alfelt was recently retired from the Red River Valley Regional SWAT, was honored at the game for his 20 years of service. He has served the last seven years as commander of the SWAT team. Here's a short video of the event.
Nicely done. Did they win the game, Chief? Is there a motion to approve the Art of Agenda withdrawing item 6B from the Consent Agenda and adding an extra item at the end of the agenda to consider sending a letter of support for HBO 1537?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 23rd, 2023 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any changes? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda items 1 through 34 excluding item 6B, which has been withdrawn?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Colpak, aye. Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Resident comments. We have one speaker tonight, Wes Filome.
Wes Filome, he/him/his pronouns. I'd like to start by saying long live George Floyd and Anuwe Magic and Justice for Shane Nutterville and Tyree Nichols. Three years from the murder of George Floyd, our nation is still facing a reckoning with policing of black people in America, and I don't feel like our city has truly taken that to heart. I want to read some comments from the recent stay interviews that provide insight into the thinking of our police department, starting with appease complaints of minorities because they are so vocal and public figures have knee-jerk reaction to this and this does more harm than good. DEI Director creating problems that are not based on what he has observed and listened to, feeling that the city commission is anti-police. Mayor and commission are not pro-law enforcement. Chief is more worried about building a brand than a safer community. Chief leads by intimidation. High number of calls that do not require a police officer and did not expect the amount of community caretaking calls. Expect to react with incredible violence but not offend anyone. Hard balance. The public doesn't understand what we do and is naive to what is happening around them. Treated like dirt working for a city agency, many changes due to what's going on in society and recent events. PTSD is ignored. Alcohol abuse is significant in the workforce. Some support from City Hall would be nice. This department needs strong, intelligent leadership or you will end up with another mess on your hands. Would appreciate further training and additional resources for doing the job. When you read these comments, you can clearly see the kind of dysfunction that occurs in a police department and the results that they can have on a community, especially black and brown people. Something that I know that we should look into is proper de-escalation training that I feel is absent in critical situations where you see these type of incidents occur. I know that not every police officer within the police department is trained with de-escalation training, and Mayor, as the liaison, I would like to ask you to commit to seeing that happen within the end of this year or by the end of next year to have them all trained. Thank you.
Item 36, resolution of annexation of property north and west of current Fargo city limits and set a date for a hearing of sufficient protest for March 20th, 2023. Mark Williams to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Item 36 is a request for annexation of a piece of property located up in North Fargo, north of Conroe 20 and west of Interstate I-29. It's approximately 231 acres, and tonight's meeting would be approval resolution to set the protest sufficiency hearing for March 20th. The primary reason for this annexation is to provide some redundancy to our water by looping it up by around Amazon and giving some more capacity to Casper Water. We've been working with the property owners. They look like they're intending to start working on this property if it's annexed, and at this time, staff is recommending approval, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of the Commissioners? Mark, you don't have the picture of the water lines going in there, but can you just tell the Commissioners where they're gonna go?
Roughly, you'll see a new road that's gonna be proposed that comes right through here, and that water main will come up through here and then it'll cut across Interstate.
And so that'll give us redundancy from east to west?
Correct. Based on the expansion around Amazon, we'll need more water pressure in the future.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak, aye. Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 37, thank you, Mark. Application for abatement or refund of taxes 4539 and 4540 for Abi Lobby at 4427 13th Avenue South. Requesting a reduction of value from 21 from $7,272,000 down to $7,210,000, and the same for 2022. Now, Mike, this is unusual. You're actually recommending a reduction.
That's correct. We, I just wanted to make you aware of one typo. The cover page that I gave you shows a reduction from $7,272, but what is actually on the abatement is $7,727. So it's just a typo on the heading there, but yes, we got an appeal from the, what we call a tax rep on these properties, and we looked at the information that we had for the market and the information that he presented us. And in this case, we felt that when we ran a new market approach on the property, given our cost tables and what they are indicating to us, that the value we had on it was not supportable. And so in this case, given the new information that we have, we are recommending a reduction in value based off of that.
So basically, your reduction is $17,000 on each?
It's about 6.7%, so if you look at the original value of 7.7 million down to 7.2, it's about a half a million dollar drop.
Okay. Any questions, Mike? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpak, aye. Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 38, project development update and fire station number eight. Chief Dirksen, this is making some progress?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, we're making progress. It's hard to believe. A year ago, we were here in front of you asking to submit for a bond to pay for a fire station, and now we're at the point where we're pretty close to going out for bids and putting an RFP out, so I thought I'd give you an update of where we're at. We have about 95% of the drawings are complete, and we're ready to go to bid on that, so I'll just give you a quick update. You can see the location of the station. It's gonna, the apparatus approach is gonna line right up with 66th Avenue South, and it's gonna be right on 33rd Street South. Just kinda just a general vicinity of where it's at to kinda orient you there just south of 64th Avenue, where the new bridge just went over the interstate. And that's what the floor plan is gonna look like, but I think you'd rather see this, what the building could potentially look like. So I showed you a picture of this before, but this is what we're anticipating, a three-bay station with the future ability to, if we needed to, we're gonna think future-focused with this, that we could add on should, as the city continues to grow to the south, we don't, I know I probably won't be the fire chief at that time, but we may need to add staff at that place, at that location, as the city continues to grow to the south. So we're thinking of that in the future. This is looking towards the northeast, looking mostly at where the sleeping rooms would be. Looking at the rear of the station facing east. And this is looking northwest, the front corner, what you'd see from the sidewalk view. And the back corner again of the building. Must've got that slide in there twice. Another back of the building, what that might look like. It'll be a drive-through station. It's in a residential neighborhood. We don't wanna be backing up and hearing those backup alarms and disturbing the neighbors in the middle of the night, so trying to be neighbor-focused in this as well. This is what we anticipate the kitchen will look like, and the dining area, what the lounge area potentially will look like. Again, just another view. You can see there's an outdoor area where we'll have a grill and kinda protected from the weather and things like that when the crews are out. One of the things that we are doing with this station is really looking at it from a decontamination perspective. If there's one thing that we learned from COVID is our stations aren't set up real well to decontaminate from infectious diseases and things like that, so we're really looking at this, and we're gonna be making adjustments with our other stations as we go forward as well to make it easier to disinfect and clean stations, so we don't cross-contaminate and things like that. So you can see, right, this is what the apparatus floor will look like, and you can see right here where the cursor is. That's a decontamination room, so that's where their gear will be stored, where it'll be washed, where equipment will be washed. We kinda take a concept of hot, warm, cold, and try to keep all the contaminants towards the apparatus floor where the trucks are parked. And so this is a preliminary. We've worked with our architect, and this is where we're looking at as the general cost. Right now, we're looking at just over $5 million to build the building. There's about a 10% contingency in there that we'll have to work with. We're working really, really hard to not have any change orders, but we know there's gonna be a few that'll pop up in there. But this is where we're at, and we will be putting an RFP out for bids and have that in front of you, hopefully in April for approval, to select a contractor, and then we can begin construction. Some of the early work is, we could probably see the walls going up maybe by the end of April, or the end of August, early September, as we get the work done. So the idea would be to have it enclosed for the winter and then be ready to go. So this is, we're looking at approximately 11,000 square feet for the total building, so at a price per square foot, somewhere in that $450 a square foot range. I'm wondering if you had any questions?
Any questions pending, Commissioners? Mr. Strand?
Thank you. Chief, I'm just curious. Now that we're building new buildings in this new era, are we, are you anticipating, for example, like an EV charging station for folks that might have electric vehicles, and now would be the time to consider?
Yep, we have.
If that's doable?
We have had that discussion, and we will be putting a conduit in the ground, in the construction. We won't plan for it yet today, but when that comes out, not too many firefighters have expressed an interest in EV vehicles, but we do know that they're coming and we are planning. There's, you know, there's some other things I think we need to talk to, talk about as the city as well as we go forward with that, but we can come up with those policies as we move forward, but we are planning for that. Even the possibility of, at some point, again, probably not in my career, but an electric fire truck. They are testing those in the country at this point.
Mr. Colpak?
Yep, I thank you for the update, Chief, and to your team. I just appreciate the fact this has very much been on time and so far under budget, so thank you.
I hope it keeps up that way.
We'll do our best here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Thank you for the report, Chief. Presentation on Second Street Pedestrian Bridge, Brenda Derrick and Mike Redding.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just want to make a couple of brief comments before Brenda starts her presentation. First, I want to thank the Commission for your input and your feedback that you've provided to staff over the last several weeks on this project, and I just, I really appreciate that because it's helped us kind of thoughtfully think about our history and about where we started with this project. And so I thought Brenda and her team did a great job kinda capturing that history from 2014 to present, and about what it was we were intending to do with our Second Street flood wall and why we built it the way we did and what we wanted to do. So I think that history is important. I just wanted to thank you again for that exchange of information and the opportunity to really capture that for your benefit as you make your decision this evening. And we are, we wanna serve, you know, certainly the will of the Commission on this project. We certainly will go in the direction that the Commission desires here. We understand there's some different perspectives on the matter, but I just want to acknowledge as well the Engineering Department for all of their time, all of their effort over these years in trying to create a really meaningful project here. So I'll turn it over to Brenda. She has some brief slides tonight, and then we want to defer to the Commission about your next steps and directions. There's two suggested motions that are contained in your packet, so turn it over to Brenda. Thank you.
So good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am happy to be here tonight to talk about our Second Street flood bridge. We are at a point that we are gonna have to make a decision on whether we wanna keep moving forward or return the funds, and so I'll do a short presentation, and then we'll get to the motion. So just to explain how we got here, you know, back in summer or fall of 2014, before, when we were looking at realigning Second Street and moving it further west and putting the flood wall up, there was a lot of discussion from downtown interested groups of how are we gonna keep connected to the river and the greenway? And so as those discussions occurred in 2014, the Commission at that time approved, first, the study of how do we incorporate some pedestrian crossing into Second Street. I don't know if you recall, but Second Street used to be a four-lane road. It got narrowed to a three-lane road. And so part of that process is they looked at what other ways to get pedestrians across that Second Street and the flood wall. And so they looked at a hock on Second Street and a removable section of flood wall, and then they looked at the bridge option. And the bridge option they looked at was really kinda comparable to our Concept D, that more economic option. And so the Houston Moore Group evaluated the pedestrian access, and then in December, the Commission approved the pedestrian bridge option due to traffic impacts of the hock and having more removable sections. And so the concept of the pedestrian bridge was really, became, became on that day. Over the next four years, this whole area was torn up. We were building Second Street. We were putting infrastructure in. We were building the flood wall, and we were building City Hall. And so during that timeframe, the Governor Burgum created the Urban Grant Program, which became a funding option for that pedestrian bridge. And so in December of 2019, we submitted an application, and we received $1 million in funds from the state. That was right in the middle of COVID, and we knew that wasn't really going to take the majority of the cost of this project, so we declined those funds. We then reapplied again in November of 2020, and that, and then in May in 2021 is when we were notified of the 2.4 million. So in November of 2021 is when we selected our consultant and started the public engagement process. And then today, today is really, we need to either return the funds or keep moving forward. So today is really the time we need to make that decision. These are the alternatives that we have been presenting, that we have presented to the public, and so you see the three different concepts, along with what you're seeing there is the the construction cost, and then there is engineering and admin added to that construction cost. So we really wanna give you the whole picture of what that cost will look like for the different concepts that you're seeing there. So looking at just Concept D, the construction for that was four and a half million. You add in your engineering and administration, you get a total cost of 6 million. We get 2.4 million on the Urban Grant, and then we can use the 850,000 from the carbon reduction, which means we would have about two and three-quarter million for local funds on this project. So today, we are looking at, should the project proceed to complete the environmental document? Yes or no? If yes is the answer, then at this point, staff is recommending Concept D as the affordable option. And so you'll see that I have two motions, and one is to continue and move forward with the environmental document and plans for Concept D. The other motion would be to terminate the project and direct the city engineer to notify the North Dakota Department of Transportation that Fargo is returning the 2.4 million. And I'll take any questions you have.
Any Commissioners with questions? Mr. Strand?
Certainly. Brenda, is there any way we could ever ask for this money to be earmarked and put on hold until we knew the final footprint of this whole plaza?
We could reapply. So the funds have to be spent by the end of this year, so we need to get them back into the DOT hands so that they can be spent by the end of the year. Down the road, when, when there's a better plan for the plaza, if that's what we're looking at, then we could reapply down the road.
And part of my thinking is that would really impact what we do, is the plaza. What we end up with in the plaza, what it looks like, what the connects are. Wouldn't it be something someday to have, if we have multiple destinations, to have a bridge that feeds into them and connects to them, not just going over the wall? So I'm, 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 I just would like to see the vision evolve, and if we could somehow tuck this money aside and set it aside for our future use when we're all on the same page, or I don't know, but that's where my head's at.
Yeah, so in front of us today, it would be either we keep the money or we give it back, just because this, they're very, the money is very time-oriented, and so these funds have to be secured to a project by September, I think, of this year. So you have to have a project bid by September of this year, and, and there's just, that timeframe would not work. So our only option would be to return those funds and then figure out our plan and reapply sometime down the road.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you. Bear with me. We had a recent discussion about a walkway across the Red River over to Blue Stem, if I recall, you know, and that walking bridge. And if I recall, in that instance, the city of Morehead was looking to maybe contribute over $4 million. And yet I'm told in this instance, it's my understanding, in this project, there would be no Morehead money. Could that ever be revisited or adjusted, or could we ever help shift the priorities to where the combined effort would be?
So I think right now, in all of our discussions, this bridge location is not on any of their future plans. It really depends on, are we having this conversation in 10 years, 15 years, five years? When does this conversation come back around, right? The direction could change by then, so it just depends on how quickly does this conversation circle back around?
Mr. Preston?
Yeah, so this isn't a question. It's more of a comment. I would really like to also see the vision and the concept for the plaza get a little better developed. I do think that this was just a little bit too early. It's also too early for the public to understand partially what we're trying to do here. You know, maybe, and I appreciate the history on it, and maybe the original concept was just to get people from one side to the other. However, I've walked that, that spot a lot of times, and just because of the way City Hall is placed, that is an obstacle to get around, so the two entrances into the Riverwalk is not that far. So I personally don't think it's worth just getting people from one side to the other. So, you know, I would, I would say that it would be wise for us to develop this concept better, figure out, and I believe we are having a Riverfront TIF meeting to take a look at the Riverfront TIF, to see if, what kind of timeframe might be more feasible for trying to do this in a way that would be more of a placemaking kind of project, and set this one aside, send the money back. Mayor?
Mr. Colpak?
I'll make a motion to accept the option two.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Money's hard to find from the feds. We don't, we got 2.4 million, but you also have the other carbon tax. We get to make it 3.3 million. And I just want to remind the Commissioners, it's hard to find 3.3 million for a project. And I'll imagine yourself coming from the river and trying to get up to Broadway with a child walking with you in a stroller. That's not easy to do. We talk about pedestrian safety on Second Avenue. It's a busy intersection. I think it's very difficult. The plaza will develop around the bridge, so if we have the bridge, the plaza will come up around it. And I think we looked at a $50 million request from Scott Bishop at one time. I don't imagine that we spend $50 million on it, but if you watch people from downtown, they're coming down to the plaza, coming down to the City Hall area. Take out the asphalt we have in front of Civic Center, move the trees around, make it benches, make it other things, and make it, like New York City has a park that you would like to come to. So I think you could develop the plaza as well, but I just want to remind you, it'll be hard to get the 3.3 million from the feds, and if we fund it ourselves, it'll be 6 million. If you do the present plan, you could fund it with TIF money, and it would not cost taxpayers more money. It would be covered by our TIF. So there would be a way of doing that and adding some amenities to the plaza as it presently sits. So I would go along with staff on this as option number one, but I understand what the what the commissioners might wanna do on this, so.
Commissioner Colpak.
So I, I know this project began almost 10 years ago and has had an extended timeline for a number of reasons, including the street construction, um, the City Hall build, the timing of some of the federal funding, um, and new approach to community engagements on large projects was part of this as well. Um, I also both know the work to date as well has taught us some lessons along the, along the way throughout the process and we still can have value and which can help inform a future build. Having said that, in the nine years that have passed, a lot has also changed and will continue to change in this environment. Downtown itself has changed greatly over the last nine years, the impacts of the diversion green space, our final plan for the City Hall Plaza, including what happens with the Performing Arts Center, and now what's happening across the river in Morehead. Lastly, and very importantly, we have heard from our citizens throughout this process, including very recently, and I, I certainly am taking their input to heart on this case. And it's clear that a majority have spoken and that the required match of now 1, 1.5 million dollars, given all other competing projects today is not a priority. So for those reasons, I will be voting for this motion.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
No. Item 40, application for property tax exemption improvements made to buildings. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's good to see a lot of people are remodeling their homes and taking advantage of the five-year tax exemptions. Good to see that happening. Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Support for House Bill 1460, sending a letter to the House of Representatives. Commissioner Preston.
Yeah, and I should've, uh, jumped in a little more quickly when we were, um, approving the agenda because this is a non-issue now. It's been actually voted down on the floor, so it's dead.
Okay. Item 42, legislative update. Recognizing Commissioner Colpak as liaison commissioner for legislative efforts in the 68th Legislative Assembly. Mike Redlinger.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, good evening again. Um, I will just provide a brief legislative update and perhaps then we can take the item A up right after that. I just had a few brief reports this evening for you. Um, the first is I just want to acknowledge Chief Dirksen for his efforts in working on the House Bill 1279. He was actually in Bismarck earlier this morning. Uh, that bill was signed into law. This is really gonna provide for protection for the employees in public safety, their families. This is going to provide a presumption of compensability, uh, for cardiac events. And so this is gonna benefit the fire service, so benefit the police and law enforcement, law enforcement communities as well. So just a big, uh, kudos and acknowledgement, uh, to, uh, fire and police for working together on this and Chief Dirksen for really leading the efforts. Um, also wanted to just note, I prepared some draft testimony over the weekend on House Bill 1273. That has been scheduled for a hearing on Thursday. That's at 9:00 AM before the House Political Subdivisions Committee. That draft testimony is before you this evening. I've also emailed it ahead of time. If you have a specific feedback on that, please do let me know. I'm happy to, uh, make sure that that captures, you know, the essence of what the commission would like to say on House Bill 1273, which is the prohibition on ranked choice voting and approval voting, uh, despite it being approved by Home Rule Charter and in our case initiated measure. And then finally, I had a question tonight, uh, to just highlight a couple of the special assessment bills that are in the works, the legislature. Uh, Brenda Derrick from our staff has really been on point on all things special assessment. She's done a great job working with the cities across North Dakota, trying to articulate the positions that will work well for cities. So if I could just have Brenda speak very briefly to that. And while she's coming up, just one other calendaring item, that is that, uh, we are sponsoring a crossover event with our legislators from Cass County on Tuesday, the 28th of, of February from noon to 2:00 PM here in the commission chambers. I'll be working with West Fargo and Cass County on the development of an agenda for that gathering. And so we will get the word out to our legislators. We hope to have good attendance. Uh, we were encouraged that Terry Efforts, our contract lobbyist, heard that several individuals are gonna be available, uh, to attend in person. So that's fantastic and we will get that all arranged this week. So I'll turn it over to Brenda to speak about special assessments. And then if you have any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
So we have two special assessment bills. The first one is 1328 and that's in relationship to mobile home parks. Um, that did have their here, committee hearing last week and, uh, received a do not pass. And so that one is not moving forward and mostly due to, um, the differences of how all the cities do special assessments, our policies are all different. And because the owners of the trailers don't have a interest in the land, how do you make sure that the owner transfers any type of, um, deduction to the actual leases of the trailers? So, um, so that did get a do not pass from the committee. It has not gone to the floor yet of the House.
Go ask a question.
Brenda, I'm just curious, you know, that mobile home parks have been a real point of contention for a few years now. And there have been outside investors who have purchased these mobile home parks and there are people that are feeling they're being priced out of being able to live there affordably. And then there's some mobile home parks, I'm not sure here, that are in opportunity zones, which are ripe for reinvestment and development. Is that the background picture in this, some of it?
Um, I think that is, some of it is, um, you know, as a mobile home park owner, as a, as an owner or a lesee in there, how do they see that, uh, you know, they don't wanna be paying more than what a residential house will be? Um, and so I, I think that's where a lot of the original conversation was coming from is how do we make sure they're being treated fairly? The problem is, is like even with some of the proposed language, some of the cities were saying you would increase their assessment from where they are today. And so that is the problem is to really find language that can be used statewide is where the issue is. So it really becomes a city question of how we wanna work with mobile home parks, how maybe if we wanna try and see if there's a savings can be. And the question would be then is how do you make sure that that saving gets, uh, put on to, forwarded on to the lesee?
Okay.
Um, so the next bill is 1330 and that is, um, a bill that, um, is based on a, um, a local project, um, that an assessment policy had changed and assessments got changed is kinda the premise behind that. And so 1330, a couple of things that does is it, um, specifies how you have to spread your special assessments by front foot, square foot, a combination thereof, or an equivalent unit based on one of the three. The other thing where we have the problem is the other thing it brings into play is zoning and specific use. So right now I have been opposing that bill because when you look at our special assessment policy and you look at our reconstruction policy or our arterial roadway policy, that is referencing the zoning. And so that would take out our policy, which through the years has gone, has been challenged up to the Supreme Court and survived. Um, and so right now, there was an amendment that, the day of the hearing, there was an amendment laid down, but the amendment that got submitted during committee proceedings was even different than the amendment that was laid down. And therefore we continue to oppose it because they have kept in the language of zoning. Um, the other bullet point on that is that you can't change your policy throughout a project. So if you have a two-year project, once you do your resolution necessity, that is the policy you are gonna use when you certify the final, um, spread of the assessments, which historically we've always done, so that does not impact us at all. Um, the League of Cities is continuing to work with, um, the submitter of the bill just to see if we can come to some language. Um, it has not hit the floor yet. I think there's still hopes that maybe there can be some adjustment yet.
Okay.
We had a discussion about how to handle legislative issues. Uh, Commissioner Preston, you had asked her at the last meeting. And I happen to know that on liaison assignments, Commissioner Colpak is Communication and Governmental Affairs. So she has a great interest in this. She used to lobby for Blue Cross Blue Shield, so this is an opportunity for her to get it back involved in legislative issues. So, uh, what Mike Redlinger and I talked about is having one commissioner assigned, like the school board does, that works in the government issues and affairs, that each one of us can contact or speak to a bill or speak to something else and try to filter a little bit what comes to the commission for our full approval or what we would not. And also with staff as testifying to see that and filter a bit and kinda be our advocate as commissioners, if there's something that should be brought to our attention. So in doing that, we've had a discussion that would be kind of a filter for us and help us, so it wouldn't be just the mayor or Mike doing it, it would be one of the commissioners. So, uh, I've asked her to take this role and maybe you wanna explain how you would see that and how you think that it would work well for the commission.
Certainly, thank you, Mayor. Um, and Commissioners, first, firstly, we're kind of building the, the plane as we're flying because this is kind of a new position for the, for the commission on, on working with the mayor. Um, and, and again, it does align with my Communication and Government Affairs assignment. But ideally, we would've had a pre-meeting before the session as a commission and talked about, for instance, what are the guiding principles we wanna bring? You know, what kinds of legislation and policy are you interested as a commission? You each have your own areas of interest and make sure we're capturing what to really watch for. So I would hope we would bring, still bring that discussion to our governance work we're doing with Dr. Schatz and continue that conversation, certainly to be ready for the next session as well. Um, and I really wanna emphasize that the balance for me will always be to respect every commissioner's autonomy as an elected official, as well as respecting always your individual right to bring anything, um, you know, individually, um, on any issue. But this clarification tonight really lets the public know that I'm active in this space. Um, if they wanna reach out on any policy issue for the commission to consider, also a resource for each of you. If you see an issue rise to a policy level that you believe the commission should take a, a collective action on, we can have that conversation at a commission meeting. Um, and then lastly, I'll, I'll continue to be additional backup for testimony, both, you know, supporting the mayor and others, but also the staff. So that's really kind of the, the purpose of this, um, additional clarification and I certainly open it up to any questions.
Commissioner Pepcorn.
I, I am very concerned about this. Uh, one of the reasons is we already have a lobbyist, so we're paying that. Uh, Mayor, you recall, we've had issues in the past with commissioners going to the legislature, uh, doing things representing the city of Fargo that were not reflected by everybody. And so that's what concerns me, uh, having an individual commissioner. We should all be lobbyists, I believe. We should all be lobbyists. We shouldn't be appointing one of us 'cause we've had issues in the past. So I will be objecting. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. So, um, in anticipation of this, I have been, uh, looping Commissioner Colpak into any and all of the conversations I've been having. I do think there's confusion in how we operate and what issues actually get, um, city support and what doesn't, um, or what just gets left by the wayside. And understanding that staff are constantly monitoring for anything that might be, um, contrary to our current policies, that's great. Uh, but there's a lot of policy issues also that get dealt with, uh, in the legislature. So if we could get some clarification about, um, what should come to the commission, how it should come to the commission, I, I told Commissioner Colpak, I'm like flying by the seat of my pants here a little bit. I've got another issue on the agenda for tonight, not knowing if it's appropriate. So, yeah, I, I think it would be really helpful in that way also to, um, design or develop a process that's a little bit more clear.
Yeah, agree.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I, 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 I sense that there's a value to us having a, a professional voice there that represents us as a group. In my mind, Commissioner Pepcorn, this isn't the same as an individual commissioner going out there who opposes what we're doing. This is, I would expect you'll support what we support and, and you'll advocate for our group efforts collectively. That's what I would hope and expect. I would add one more thing to your charge and our charge, not just the legislature, we also work with the governor's office. That's a second branch of government that has a veto power. And some of these topics that we may not prevail on, we may have success with the governor's office conceivably. So I would add that to your list of touch points and targets where we aim and go and put all, 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 pull out all stops. If we have a position as a group, we've taken as a group where we represent the city, we, 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 we go, we go the distance with advocacy, with the legislature and with the governor's office. And frankly, if we need to, we go to the courts.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Preston.
If I could just add to that a little bit, um, that also brings up the issue of having an ongoing in-between-the-sessions kind of relationship building with the legislators and with the governor's office. So I'm hoping that that could be part of the role, um, as well, to help organize us in that fashion.
So crossover is coming up and we do have a meeting assigned with legislative team. And I request commissioners, if you can make time for that meeting because we'll ask the legislators what they're believing and it'll give us an opportunity to challenge or do different things we need to do. Specials and Brenda Derrick giving testimony, I have no idea what she's talking about half the time, so it's really good to have an expert do that because it does goof up our, how we do things in Fargo. And we do an excellent job in Fargo, so it's really hate to, to change that. But all our department heads have expertise that we, we need them out there testifying for us. Mike, anything else? That's it? Yep? Okay. Uh, I'm just gonna take the liberty to jump to the last item before we do liaison reports. You did have House Bill 1537 and you wanted to talk about that, Commissioner Preston.
Yeah, this is a, a request again to just, um, uh, take a, a position of support for hate crime bill or bias crime bill is what they're calling it at the state level. And when I look back on two years ago, uh, actually, um, Mayor, you and the Chair of the Human Relations Commission, as well as Nicole Crutchfield, had submitted some testimony in support of it. I do think that, uh, in, in the memo, I indicated that particular case that was kicked up to the state level because it was an aggravated assault instead of a simple assault. So, um, there is some value in having, by all means, in having a, a state level, um, law, uh, hate crime law in place. So now, the thing is, it's being heard in the House Judiciary Committee tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock. But I think that whatever action we would take, if we decided to support it, um, could be communicated to the committee members because I don't think they'll take action immediately on it. Even if they do, we could then communicate to the entire, um, House representation from, from the county.
How is this bill different than the House bill done in 21? How have they changed it?
In 21?
Yeah.
You know, I'm basically, I think it's real similar. I, I apologize, I cannot speak to any specifics that have been changed.
So the reasons it was voted down in 21 and I have anticipation it'll be voted down this time as well. And we talked to Police Chief about it, there is a different type of bill we might suggest to them. And it might be a friendly amendment to have them study this bill so they can get the prosecuting attorneys on board as well.
Yeah.
And there's a called enhancing legislation that would help us enhance the crime. Uh, Commissioner Chief, could you speak to that for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Uh, yes, essentially creating an enhancer crime for, uh, hate crime as an enhancement to any underlying criminal offense would allow for an additional penalty for any crime in which the motivation was, uh, protect a class, things of that nature. So, uh, we have a similar law in Wisconsin that was, uh, we were able to utilize and, and broadly across any crime spectrum. So instead of trying to individualize each crime class, uh, which gets somewhat difficult on the enforcement side, you have a standalone enhancer. The prosecutor can look at the crime itself, uh, decide if the elements of the crime are there and then decide if that enhancement piece, based on either the evidence or the statement or admissions of the offender, uh, would lead us to, uh, the potential to add a hate crime enhancer to that.
And if I understand the bill last time, one of the problems the law enforcement team had was you had to have education and many of the law enforcement in rural sites didn't know how they would. didn't know how they would fund that or how they would do that.
Well, yeah, on the post-board side, police officer standards and training, they had concerns in terms of their ability to do what was asked for in the bill. But again, I think if you move this into a study or some kind of the kind of future thing that we could work on that together, I'd be happy to assist you with that and try and move something forward in the future.
Other discussion? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Chief. I'm glad to hear from you on this. You know, Fargo, at Commissioner Preston's leadership lead, was the first city in the state. I believe Grand Forks also implemented this, similar policies. What I'm looking at in my head, in that balcony view, is the trends that are evolving with targeting of certain groups of people and making them really even more vulnerable and marginalizing them more. And we all can identify, I mean, it's happening across the country. After the COVID situation, we had people attacking Asians and Chinese people. We had it trickling down from the president. You know, we have, we have an immense attack on the LGBTQ, especially the trans community, just beyond comprehension. And even down to the level of who would think of it that they're going to be election workers, they're going to be targeted with hate. You know, so and we could probably really grow this list really quickly if we just put our heads together. I support all of our efforts to elevate the bar and the standards of respect for each other and in every moment we can disallowing further harm to anybody in these capacities. So go for it. You have Fargo's support. I think we have proof here in the pudding that it isn't, you know, I don't think we've had problems with our local ordinance, at least that I know of, and I think it's a good balcony to stay in and a good community value to adhere to. So thank you for your support on this.
Chief, we did have some issues with the hate crime in town. It didn't work out too well. Maybe we should make you aware of those.
Well, I guess I wouldn't call it a problem with the ordinance. I guess I would say that it hasn't been effective in enhancing penalties. And so that was really what we're, I think everyone's intention was, and I think largely because there is no state law to base an enhancement penalty off at a city prosecutor level. The manner in which the ordinance had to be constructed really put it in a position where it didn't have an effect on the penalty. And so from that perspective, you know, I don't think that we've gotten a lot of effectiveness from that, just because of the way it had to be constructed.
Commissioner Colpak?
So I certainly support the intent of that, and I would support a study to get to that enhancement penalty level so that it is effective.
Mr. Chairman?
Is that a motion, or?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion, Commissioner Preston?
So I understand fully that I think as chief, you probably have enhanced the training and the reporting side of things. What we're talking about here at the state level as well is to enhance that. So even though, and I agree fully, going towards the enhancement bill would be ideal, but there's also some additional requirements in this particular legislation that would be valuable across the state, and that includes the training, the reporting, those kinds of things. So it's not for not, if I can say it that way.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colpak? Aye. Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Liaison commissioner updates.
Mayor, was that a motion on, a vote on the amendment or on the overall motion?
On the?
It was amended, wasn't it?
Well, the motion hadn't been made, so were you, I apologize.
I'm sorry, but.
I'm assuming you were passing the motion with amendment on it? Is that what?
To go for a study, to study getting to an enhanced penalty legislation.
Okay, so the original motion then still needs to be made.
There wasn't an original motion, there wasn't an original motion on that, so if you want to make that motion, go ahead.
So move.
Second.
Just understand the motion. Can you please tell me what you're motioning? A letter of support from the commission?
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
Liaison reports, Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. This coming Sunday, I will be meeting with the members of the Youth Commission, which Commissioner Colpak works with, and we're going to be asking the Youth Commission to come up with a nomination for a student to serve on the Sustainability and Resiliency Committee. The young population is just passionate often about climate issues, and so we're going to tap into that with our Youth Commission and work with them and bring that voice to our table. And while I'm at it with the Sustainability and Resiliency Committee, we're going to be broadening it and adding two more community voices and bringing transit to the table, which I think really is essential to be there, as well as the Youth Commission. So we're going to grow the SRC and bring youth in as well. Just an update.
Commissioner Colpak?
Yep, four topics tonight. The first is the revered water treatment plant, source of pride for the community, both from a quality and efficiency perspective. And the combination of the lime plant that was built in nineteen ninety-seven with the membrane plant in twenty nineteen, we have fourteen different configurations, depending on water source and corresponding quality, where we can utilize different ratios of both of those for cost efficiencies. And the next slide is a graph that explains with some visual the impact that that can have. So when you look at this graph, and this is for twenty twenty-three, and this is, you know, this is January, you see in the middle of the high blue bars there, which represent lime plant costs were higher because we were treating upstream water for different quality issues, and so it was better to use the lime plant for that period of time as opposed to the membrane plant, which are the green bars. And so if all we had all year was, you know, the option to utilize the lime plant, our costs exponentially would be greater throughout the year. So it's just a great example. It's a very complex water treatment system, but it's also one of the best in the region. So Commissioner Strand also just mentioned this, but the next Youth Initiative meeting is Super Bowl Sunday at one o'clock, and we are exploring an ambassador program, which is a new idea coming from another like program in Watford City, North Dakota, so more to come there, but I'm excited about that conversation. Water reclamation, you know, as you know, over the past two years, water reclamation has been expanding and has been focused on the excavation, pouring concrete, and construction of new buildings. The facility expansion has now progressed to equipment installation and implementation. To the right here, you see three fine screens were delivered from Germany for the Headworks Building. Each weighs ten thousand pounds and treats thirty-four million gallons per day and removes grit and dirt and debris, protecting downstream damage. And the fire department, this was actually part of, it was item number thirteen in the consent agenda that we approved tonight. The fire department has a process to rotate its structural firefighting gear to ensure safety and security of personnel. It's also important to ISO Class One certification. And the equipment has airflow channels in the back of the coats and boot gaiters attached to the pant liners to stop cancer-causing agents from flowing through the garments. And this year, the fire department will be purchasing gear for fourteen new employees and twenty-one current employees through a cooperating purchasing agreement, which helps us secure the best equipment at the most affordable rates. And those are my updates. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I get a lot of letters and discussions about the ice on the roads and public works and what they're doing with all those crazy things. Ben Dow came to me and said, we have used your supply of salt to try to decrease the amount of salt on the roads. Fortunately, we've had some warm weather now, and some of that'll go down, but just want to say his team's been doing a great job, but it has been one of the winters that's been difficult to deal with the ice and the snow. The other thing in recycling, there will be some stuff come out on recycling on glass and how glass will not be recycled any longer in your home. Maybe recycled at the recycling centers, but not in, you know, put everything in one, and that's because the costs of recycling have changed over time, and we're going to get away from the glass in your single recycling buckets as well. That's it on my report. Commissioner Preston?
I don't have any updates tonight.
Commissioner Pepcorn? Any other business? John, you got any birthdays?
Well, Kimber's birthday is the nineteenth. Happy birthday coming up, Kimber. That's it.
Any, oh, okay, move to Jordan?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, please say aye.
Aye.
Or turn.